Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll wait for a few more councilors to join up. Thank you.
Tony, did you let everybody know that the chat shows up on the screen and the council chambers and gets broadcast? Yeah, so you're not chatting privately, so.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Hey, there's Kathy's whole head. How nice. Good to see you. Now she's escaping.
And Judy's audio is working right from the get-go.
Cool.
I'm quiet.
Give us all enough time and we'll get organized.
Yep. Has anybody heard from Riley?
No.
Well, I've got after 12, so Tony indicated that we're recording, so Kathy, if you could make sure we're... We'll start and let Riley join us.
Hey, on record.
All right, well, let me call to order the, this special city, Lakin City City Council meeting of June 19th, Friday, 2020, and it's noon. And Kathy, could you verbalize role?
Nick Anderson.
Yeah.
Judy Casper.
Here.
Deanna Hinton.
Here.
Riley Hedlund may be here shortly. Or is he here? No, I don't see him. Diane Kuz.
Here.
Rick Mark.
Here.
And Mitch Parsons.
Here.
Great. All right, well, the, I think, to remind everybody, the chat feature on Zoom is a public feature, so any kind of chat you do inside that component is visible to the public. And we called this meeting really in anticipation of another meeting we've got at 1:30 with the other cities and county for a joint meeting. And we wanted to be able to discuss the items prior to that meeting. And as I recall, there's two, the 24-hour hold and then, you know, potentially downsizing, you know, group sizes are the two items. Is that correct, Mr. Chandler?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I've also asked that we talk a little bit about enforcement for the, for mask wearing, just to bring it up, because I've been getting quite a few questions about that, so I just at least want to have a conversation.
All right. Well, since there's really not a lot of this, I mean, all we can do is information at this point on the face coverings. Ron and Chief Palmer, perhaps if you could help us better understand the governor's edict and...
Yes. So this, this had originally been on the county's joint meeting, but it was taken off when the governor issued her executive order requiring masks in our, or face coverings in our county. We got some information today that shed some more light on what this actually means. It requires face coverings. Face coverings, face shields, and masks in, in businesses that were listed. Now, business, the term business is an interesting one, and it also goes to the reason why the county pulled this from the agenda. The businesses are listed as grocery stores, fitness-related organizations, pharmacies, public transportation agencies and providers, personal service providers, restaurants, bars, breweries, brew pubs, wineries, tasting rooms, and distilleries. And then this is the one I found most interesting, retail stores, shopping centers and malls, ride-sharing services. The, the retail store was the one that caught my interest the most, because that is the broadest one. And, and then, and so it would affect most of our businesses. The business is required to, for masks to be worn by, masks, face coverings, shields to be worn by employees, contractors, volunteers, communities, and visitors. They are to provide masks, face shields, or face coverings for their employees. They're, they are required to post signs about the face mask, shield, or face covering. Now, we did a survey this week where we went out and looked at dozens of businesses throughout the community. And what we found was that very few have a sign up that said, that is requiring or masks, or are requiring masks. We only found two that are actually using the signs that we printed and provided. And two had other signs. So we did not find that there was a widespread requirements by the businesses. So this would change that in that it would now make it a requirement and make it a requirement to put up signs. They're also to provide at no cost at least disposable face coverings for customers or visitors who do not have one. Okay. There are some exceptions to that, and there are some differentiations between the public as those who are under 12 and those who are 12 and older. The biggest question, and we knew this one was going to come up, and we have been looking for information, is about enforcement. And there really is not much information out there at all. According to the executive orders, the failure to comply with an executive order falls under two provisions of the state code, three provisions, but two particular. They fall under the health care ordinance provisions, and they, which is in ORS 431A10. And then they fall under ORS 401990, which makes a violation a Class C misdemeanor, which is subject, according to that, of $1,250 fine and up to 30 days in jail. As I also looked through the, the health adminis, the healthcare laws associated with this, specifically this one that is identified as ORS 431A010, I was looking for requirements of local law enforcement. Yeah, in other words, who is actually responsible for enforcing this? Is it our police department? Is it the health administration? Just who actually is the one that's responsible? And what I found in that is that, under the health administration, the, the health department is the one responsible, but it also states that they will be assisted to the extent that resources are available. State and local law enforcement officials, to the extent resources are available, must assist the Oregon Health Authority and local public health administrators in insurance, ensuring compliance with the law. So that's what I found. Richard may be able to shed a little bit more light on the legal end of it. Now, the chief with, has been working with the state police in trying to know how to go forward with this, because ultimately, one of the challenges, resources. And so, Chief, do you want to tell them what guidance the state has been giving to you guys?
Yeah, it, you know, this obviously will have a ripple effect throughout the state if it's not approached carefully. And believe me when I say that there is other pressures coming to bear on law enforcement when it comes to what's going on right now. But the guidance we initially got has not been rescinded, and it was actually when the county was looking at putting theirs out before the latest government thing come out, it really came right out and said that the county rule was a, kind of a, I forget the term they used, voluntary directive. And, and that we would keep an eye on it, but it was, the whole purpose behind this paragraph they put in there is to make that a self-policing thing and not have law enforcement out chasing individuals down the street and issuing citations for no mask. We, you know, you've kind of seen what's been going on since March with just trying to keep up with VRD complaints and hotel complaints, and now the 24-hour rule. And, you know, fortunately, the vast majority of those were, were unfounded, but it still takes a resource. And when you've got three or four, three officers and a sergeant, if you're having a good day, or three officers, and, and you're spreading out to go chase people not wearing masks in open areas, like walking down the sidewalk and that sort of thing, we're just not going to be able to keep up with that. You know, and so it's a catch-22. I mean, if we go out there and we start confronting people, and especially if we start issuing citations, it could be interesting to see what that reaction is now that, whether it's right or wrong, we're coming to the end of a period of time where people have been cooped up and locked in their houses and, and not talking to people. I mean, I just hold myself up as an example. I mean, my wife has not had face-to-face contact with about two people since the end of February because of an immunization or immune compromise situation. So, and I know there's lots of people out there, and, and the doctors are saying this is a real thing, but it's a, it's a, it's a tough thing to decide. I'm glad I'm not the one making the decision as to what we're going to do here, but I will tell you, this will be a very distinct challenge to try to enforce.
So, Ron, you were speaking, when you went through this, you were speaking of the governor's latest mandate, not the, not the county's directive, right?
It was. The, the chief, when he talked, he spoke of the two of them, but they are distinct from each other. The one I was reading from specifically was the latest guidance we received about the governor's directive on masks, face shields, and face coverings.
And, and I would assume that's the overriding one that we should, you know, have in front of us?
It is. As a matter of fact, yeah, it is the overriding one. As a matter of fact, as I understand the county's directive, that is applying in the count, unincorporated parts of the county and not the cities, because we have not agreed to it.
Okay.
And I'd, I'd take you back also to, you know, the prior to phase one, and as we're trying to think about approaching phase two. I mean, the directive that we got initially from the governor's office and in conjunction with working with the Oregon State Sheriff's Association, the Oregon Association of Chiefs of Police, and Oregon State Police and DOJ was, as we ramped up these new rules as far as 24-hour rules or opening up the, the hotels or the face shield thing, the guidance has been and remains at this time to use contacts as a teaching moment and not go out and be, be heavy-handed with this stuff, so.
Mr. Appicello, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I, I just want to point out again that, you know, what Ron talked about, 431A specifically has its enforcement mechanism, the issuance of notices of violation by health officers. So, and this is a, the directive from the Oregon Health Authority of face coverings. My guess is that the way it's to be enforced is pursuant to 431A. I'm, I'm going to agree with the chief that I don't know that the intention is to have officers issue misdemeanor citations for face masks. That it looks like you can get a site, a civil administrative penalty from the Oregon Health Authority. I don't really see it as being set up to be enforced criminally.
The biggest, the biggest challenge that we face with the, with the questions that we, we get and the complaints that we receive go right to the heart of what Richard and the chief were talking about. Are, are, the people who call and complain don't make a distinction between a police issue and a health authority issue. And so that's perhaps the guidance that I was looking for the most, so that as we get calls, we know either how to deal with them, such as sending them to the health authority, or to direct people to the health authority. That's been the hardest part, because when we get those calls, there's, people don't make the distinction. They just say, somebody's breaking the rules.
Right.
And the other part of it is, is that if it's a business in particular, our directive was to encourage the complainant to reach out to OSHA, or for us, if they're unwilling to do that, we can take as much information as they're willing to give us. And I'll tell you, one of the hardest things to get in these complaints is somebody that wants to stand up and be a witness and testify against this person if the citation goes to court, because a lot of these people are employed by the same people they're complaining about. But, but that's what we've done with the last couple of reports that we've taken, like on the 24-hour rule. We've generated the information, we've directed it to the OSHA, linked that we were told to by OACP and OSSA. And then we've also educated some of the people that are complaining that they're seeing this, that they have the ability to, to call OSHA, direct themselves and file those complaints.
I guess the, the number one concern I have, and neither one of you've kind of talked about it or none of you, is the third enforcement component, and that's the vigilante citizens' arrest. And that is more concerning to me because of, Chief, a lot of things you said, pent-up, and certainly the people who are certainly pro-mask, pro-face coverings. I can see face-to-face confrontation, and I have a little, you know, how, how are we going to deal with that? And that's going to keep you busy.
And that's actually what I kind of was pleasantly surprised with when I read the county's order follow-up yesterday before they rescinded it because of the update from the governor. But, and I'm assuming it was Wayne Belmont put it in there, but there's a paragraph about three or four sentences from the end of that document that just says that, again, I forget the term, but this is, this is a voluntary compliance thing, and in nowhere is this intended for this to be, to be sending police officers out to enforce this, private citizen or anybody else. This is just information of how important this is, and it's up to the voluntary compliance of our citizens to follow through it. But it, it literally points out there is no authority by anybody to confront, be confrontational about this issue.
Deanna, you had a question?
I do. And I'm not sure, maybe it's for Richard. I was assuming that when the governor put out her directive for face coverings and included Lincoln County, that it was all of Lincoln County, including the cities, and not just Lincoln County unincorporated.
That's, that's correct. The thing that I was referring to was the initial directive that the county was going to put out.
I think the county directive is moot at this point, because you have a more specific Oregon Health Authority document that basically says in Lincoln County, a customer, employee, doesn't matter. And, and I, that's a Oregon Health Authority directive, and I think it's enforceable under 431A. I think you can get a, a notice of violation from a health officer. I think if they need the help of the police department, they will ask. And maybe, I, I see it as calls going to the health authority that there's a business in Lincoln City that's not enforcing the mask requirement. And then they would go there. I don't really see it as people getting chased down the street like you didn't have a mask on when you were in this business. I think they'll go to the business and give the business a violation and put it on the business that they got to tell people when they come in, here's your mask, put it on. And if you don't, get out. I think they're, that's how it's going to be. It's, it's going to be on the business to enforce, or they're going to face the fines.
Okay. Mr. Mark, you had a question?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, two thoughts that, I, I think you, you run into, Richard could help me, you run into issues if, if citations are given, you know, in kind of a spotty fashion, and then, you know, someone who gets a citation could say, well, why didn't they, I, I wasn't treated equally, you know, because there were 80% of the people without masks, they never got citations. I don't know if that's, but my, maybe more practical concern is can we make the signs mandatory? Require businesses to post the sign or something like that?
No.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Ron.
So, under the guidance that we received today from the state, signs are mandatory. It states that the must post, let's see, so a business is required to post clear signs about the masks, face shield, or face covering requirements. Now, I don't know if either the county or the state has produced any signs as samples, but ours are still certainly available, but they are required to post clear signs.
Okay, that's good.
As of Monday, when Ron and the staff were trying to do a kind of impromptu survey of how the signs were being posted, I will say that I didn't see a single open open business from South 23rd to Seven Gables that didn't have some kind of posting as to what they were expecting out of customers to come in there. Uh, some of them, it limited the amount of customers that come in and had lines out front with lines painted on the ground for social distancing and, and most of those people standing in line that I saw were wearing masks there. But I never saw a single business with a sign that posted, "You have to wear a mask in here or must come in." I heard in another place in town, we found two of those, but.
Uh, Judy?
Yeah, for what it's worth, I was in the Chamber of Commerce the other day to pick up my handy-dandy face shield and I asked them about the masks, you know, no shirt, no shoes, and they said they were picking him up quite, you know, quite readily. So, between the time the governor gave her declaration and today, I think more people are going in to maybe adhere to what she's posting. Um, and, and they said more, more businesses were picking up on the signs about, you know, the warnings. So, I, I think maybe we might see an surge of the use of, um, posting.
Okay. But, uh, you know, could we, in managing the time, uh, cause we, this was just to kinda information because we've got the governor, but, you know, we limit it now. Uh, Deanna, could you finish up and then we'll move to the next topic?
Yeah, I just have been asked by one of the county commissioners if we could share our sign, um, with them and perhaps even other cities, the design of it. And furthermore, if we could add the governor's order or whatever is the directive, you know, that makes these signs, uh, mandatory to hang up, hold, to put up in the businesses. And I, I just have a, that's one question. The next one is more of a statement. I think it would be a really good, uh, message to visitors and people who are shopping in all the stores if we have that one, that one sign everywhere so people are getting the message that, um, that the businesses are all together, the city supports this and, and, well, of course, the county and the, um, and the governor. But, um, just to have one sign, and I know that there's a few different, um, signs made by the businesses, but if we could make an effort to make sure that they get one of ours and if we could change it and if we could make that, um, graphic available to the county and other cities.
All right. Okay, so could we, uh, move on then to, um, topics of, we've talked with the city or the other cities and county, and that's the 24-hour hold issue? And, uh, Ron, can you set that up?
I can. Um, Um, so in the two orders that we've had that dealt with this, um, county orders number 42118 and 52136, in the appendix, there was a provision that required, um, a minimum 24 hold be maintained between checkout and the time the room is cleaned and put out for rental again. Uh, the, what will be discussed with the council, and that was for hotels and short-term rentals, VRDs, bed breakfasts, and home chairs. But the, uh, commissioners have before them, and, and you have a copy of that, is to strike that provision and replace it with or amended requirements. So, it lists, um, the restrictions and then it will have, uh, instead of the language about the 24-hour role, it would just simply say or amended requirements. Now, uh, Council Mark had asked me a question a few days ago about the basis for this decision or this requirement. Um, Ken and I, and then, and I've also sent in from, uh, had asked, um, Wayne Belmont this question, what was the basis for this? I'd already sent to you the, uh, information from the Oregon Recreational Lodging Association, and I believe you have a copy of a letter that was sent back where they have removed that provision and said, "We didn't really mean it," basically, and, uh, felt that the cleaning procedures were, were adequate. Uh, and if there's a timeframe, it should only be 15 minutes. Um, we have looked through the CDC guidelines, we have looked through the county's, uh, guidelines, uh, and health departments, and we've looked through the OHA, uh, for that, and we have not found anything that specifically refers to a 24-hour waiting period. I asked again Wayne Belmont if he had any information and he has not provided me with anything. It might be a good question to ask him, uh, at the meeting, but, uh, we could not find something that was specifically associated with that.
Okay. You, could you, uh, what the amendments are, uh, what are they specifically recommending, um, the county in Lua?
He didn't have any extra language in there. It just says or amended requirements.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, um, I guess on the table then would be for us would be a, a discussion with the other cities and our, but ourselves today, you know, on that 24-hour hold, um, how we feel about it and then, you know, depending on that, be able to relay that at the, uh, joint meeting. Um, Judy, you have your hand up? Did you? Okay, no? All right. Uh, Rick, did you?
Yeah, so, and I, I pointed this out in the chat at the beginning of the meeting and I, sorry if I said this earlier, but just before 12 o'clock, I sent everybody an email, which copied an email I sent to the commissioners and it's included on their public input and, um, I wish you prefaced this by saying, I'm not at all sure what to do. But in terms of the basis or the authority for the 24-hour rule, um, when I looked around, I found something from the American Hotel and Lodging Association, their guidelines. This was published two weeks ago, three, not quite three weeks ago. And they took their guidance from the CDC. Now, this guidance refers to, and when we had our county-wide meeting, we heard from a county health official, I don't know if it was Rebecca or whoever it was, who said that the guidance, and this applies if a guest is COVID-positive. And if that's the case, then the CDC recommends or calls for a 24-hour period, uh, after the guest leaves before the room is rented out. And this thing I found from the American Hotel Lodging Association, uh, repeats that, that guidance. And as I said at the bottom of my comment, sort of, you know, I don't know if begs the question as a phrase, but, but, um, how many guests are coming to hotels and announcing at the desk that they're COVID-positive, number one? Number two, we just had two weeks ago, 500% increase in cases in the county. Most of those were people who are asymptomatic. I, I think it's a fair assumption to say that, that we've got people coming and staying in our hotel rooms who are carrying the virus and are asymptomatic and no one knows who does and who doesn't. That all said, I mean, I literally woke up in the middle of the night thinking, I, I, I take these messages we're getting from the hotel owners to heart and, and I understand the grief we're causing with this, so I do not really have, I, I don't really know what to do about this. I, I just, so I just wanna make this point that there, this doesn't come out of thin air. This wasn't just made up. There is a basis for the rule. Whether it's the right thing to do to apply it or not, I, I'd like to hear what other people think.
Mitch, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, originally when this came up, I voted no and I'm still for removing the 24-hour hold. Um, just simply based on nowhere else are we forcing any other industry or business to pretend that everybody is possibly positive and clean accordingly. This is the only industry, the only segment of an industry where we're applying that rule.
Good point. Judy, you?
Um, yeah, I, I, um, I voted in favor of it initially and now I'm thinking, um, to remove it. I've spoken to several of the housekeepers and asked them if they were concerned about it. And they said, "No, not really" because they had all the equipment and the clothing and when they went in and cleaned and they were trained to clean and they hit the surface areas and they, they wanted to know where the 24-hour rule came from if it was medically necessary. They were given bonuses in, in one instance. Um, they said, "There's not that much of a concern," I mean, from what I spoke to. And, um, I think if we look at nurses who come in contact with people and they come home from their work sites to our families, um, asymptomatic people are going to exist no matter where we go. And I think it's pretty common knowledge that if you feel sick, stay home. Uh, I think we're, we're kind of penalizing, um, our businesses to a degree. I think they are to be commended for all the things they are doing. In fact, one of the, um, cleaners told me that in, uh, one of the R D areas, they've rented, uh, what do you call it, foggers to totally disinfect a room. So, I think there are more things that are being done and I would assume that if people come out here to visit us, they know our opinions and they're going to be somewhat precautious, at least, um, to us who are in the lodging industry. So, I'm inclined to remove the 24-hour hold.
Deanna, you had your hand up?
Yes, I'll take it down so I don't forget. Um, I still am in favor of the 24-hour hold, um, to support our, our, um, folks that are the housekeepers. I've, um, we've received several from businesses, their main objection to this is that it's an inconvenience to schedule and, um, the other, um, point that they like to make is it's also costing them revenue, which I understand and, um, and, but my overall concern with this, um, is the health concern. And for me, that overarches anything and everything I think about COVID and if there's a way in which we can, can keep some of our folks, um, healthy with the mask, with the 24 hours, um, I'm gonna be voting that way because, um, like everybody knows, I live right in the middle of VRD land over here and I can watch the behavior. And I have noticed that, um, before, before someone checks in, that there hasn't been exactly 24 hours. Um, and then another one, there has been and very carefully checked out by maybe a supervisor before the cleaner comes in, but, um, I think we still don't know quite enough and the asymptomatic is just as important as asymptomatic for me. And it's not just another business, it's someone who is staying hours on end and touching a lot of surfaces in one location. So, I don't equate it to another type of business, um, at all. I think it's on a whole nother level.
And Diane, you had your hand up?
Um, yes, and there's, you know, many. I think that the 24-hour hold, I would probably vote to let that go, um, simply because the American, what, A H L A has said there's that 15-minute wait. We know that there are a lot, I think we have half that follow the rules and half that are not following the rules. Um, and at this time, the economy is, is one thing. People are losing money, they really are, and they're not gonna make it in January if we don't do something about it. So, I'm inclined to probably vote to drop the 24-hour hold.
And Judy, you have your hand up?
Um, I, I'd like to point out that I don't think there's been any identified outbreaks at these lodging facilities or VRDs as a result of, uh, help, help worker, home, workers, cleaners who have had an outbreak. So, there aren't really outbreaks coming from the workers who are in these industries.
Yeah. And I, I think that's a good point, Judy. Uh, in essence, in, uh, Lincoln City, we've had, uh, rooms for rent since March 21st, uh, with the casino opening up and their lodging. So, um, and then we went again June 1st with the bulk, um, and the, the contact tracing certainly hasn't come back to, to any of those. Um, if, if there's no further discussion, uh, you know, this is a, uh, a council meeting, we could take a motion and this would be a motion, uh, that we would then move on, uh, to the county in our next meeting as far as, uh, how the city, um, is positioned on this issue. Somebody has a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to remove the 24-hour hold for lodging requirement.
Nice, second.
So, we have a motion from Judy and a second from Mitch? All right, any further discussion?
Ron, I just, uh, Jerry, um, do you need me sitting in on this next meeting?
Oh, the, the joint one with the, uh, county?
Right.
Uh, I, I don't, I don't think so. You're, you're okay. Thank you for this one.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Hang in there.
Okay. Rick, uh, you had, had discussion?
I, just a little thought as far as other businesses being restricted. I think restaurants are required to space out there, you know, have fewer patrons and, and, and that, you know, um, Ace Hardware, I know it was doing a really good job of having somebody at the door and limiting the number of customers and I, I don't know if that reduces their revenue significantly, but I would think the restaurants, it would. So, there is that.
Yeah.
However, I'm inclined to drop the rule because, you know, I mean, these hotels, they get something like two-thirds of their annual revenue over the summer. It's, I don't know that I, it's a lot of responsibility to, to, to weigh on my shoulders.
All right, well, the motion on the table is to remove the 24-hour hold. And, um, Kathy, could you do a roll call, please?
Dick Anderson?
Yes.
Judy Casper?
Yes.
De, Deanna Hinton?
No.
Riley Holdland?
No.
Diane Kuz?
Yes.
Rick Mark?
Yes.
And Mitch Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, well, we'll relay that to the next meeting. The, uh, the other topic then, uh, again, at the joint meeting is gonna be, uh, supposedly a, a proposal to reduce the size of groups. Right now in phase one, um, you can have a, a group to the size of 25 with appropriate spacing. Um, and I think the discussion will be, you know, down to 10, to move that down to 10. Um, I could not see whether that group size is in, inside a building or outside, if, if that varied, and I may be mixing up with other phases or future phases. So, uh, Ron or, um, Mr. Appicello, either one of you can help us with that. Is there a, an inside provision and an outside provision of group size?
Hmm. I'm not sure, Mitch, man, I'll have to check on that.
Yeah, I, I, when I read the, uh, proposed order, I didn't see a distinction. Let me look for it again here.
Okay. Well, let's, for the time being, let's just assume that it's, you know, uh, any kind of both, uh, no, no more than, uh, 25 in or out and the proposal is to take it to 10 or the discussion. Any, any thoughts on that? Uh, Diane, you have your hand up?
Um, yeah, I'm kinda confused as to, can you give me examples of where this 25 and 10 and if it's outdoors, how, how do you limit that except for, you know, cause the one we had was a family had a party and then we had all those that came out. But I know in hotel or in restaurants, they can only do like a group of six, um, at a table. So, uh, can you help me out?
Well, I think, uh, my experience, I could tell you, um, and chime in, is one, I think some of the businesses are only letting, uh, initially, they only let 10 people into their facility, uh, initially, and then, uh, when it went to phase one, they were able to get 25. I think that's why you had, uh, at Aces, they had people lining up outside. Uh, the other is I've had lots of calls from churches, uh, The other is, I've had lots of calls from churches where they're limited, you know, to, right now, 25. And all these also include appropriate spacing. So you'd have, you know, six feet between everybody. So depending on the size of your building, you may not be able to even have 25, you know, today. But those are the places I've, I've seen it. I haven't, like you, I haven't seen mass barbecues at a park or anything like that. But I guess there could be, again, with appropriate spacing. Ron?
Okay. So I'm looking under the order number 25 by the governor. And she talked about social and recreational gatherings. Social, and this is under the baseline requirements, social and recreational gatherings outside of a home or place of residence continue to be prohibited regardless of size unless the distance of six feet can be consistently maintained between individuals from a household, in which case, social and recreational gatherings of up to 10 people are permitted. So this one specifically mentions gatherings outside of a home or place of residence. So this would be outside. Then it has in both the baseline and, and the phases, other regulations that pertain to food and drink establishments, businesses indoors and things like that. So it sounds to me like it, and that it is, were outdoors gatherings.
Thank you.
Mitch, with what you have?
I'm looking at, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm looking at the whereas clauses on the proposed order. And it says, whereas state baseline guidance for gatherings now in place allows local cultural, civic, and faith gatherings for up to 25 people, provided physical distancing can be in place, and prohibits local gatherings over 10 people. By comparison, Lincoln County is in phase one, which differs from baseline, by also allowing for any purpose, including any social and recreation gatherings, up to 25 people, provided physical distancing is in place, and other O H A guidance, such as for restaurants, is followed. So what the county, the next section is, county desires to return to the baseline guidance for private social gatherings only as a further means to prevent the spread of the disease. So it looks like what exactly they're proposing is to go back to 10, which is the baseline for local social gatherings. I don't see any other distinctions in there about inside and outside.
Does that mean restaurants?
It depends on what you go to. If you're working from the state's executive order, number 25, then it makes a distinction between gatherings. And it has cultural, civic, faith-based, social, recreational, then it goes into restaurants, food and drink with separate requirements, closures of businesses with, and what they have to do when they open retail businesses. So the point where they specifically mention gatherings is, is in the area of, that I had mentioned about being outside.
And the, the order, the order actually says, beginning on June 24th, the county will restrict private social gatherings only to no more than 10 persons in accordance with the baseline requirements. Governor's order.
Mitch, you had a question?
Not a question necessarily. I was just going to say that I'm not necessarily for going back at the moment. I think everybody in the state has an idea of what these phases are. And as soon as we start picking apart what phase we're in, it's just going to get more muddied and convoluted and people aren't going to really understand where we stand.
Good point. Deanna?
I have a question. Does anybody know why the county is interested in doing this? Is this because of the one family gathering that generated that first outbreak? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand this. I have a tendency to agree with Mitch that if we muddy the water a little bit, then that's going to make it harder. However, I am not really noticing anyone following the guidelines anyway. So I don't know what difference it would make. But, and I'm not sure if this is passed, if we aren't requesting more time from the chief's officers. And if so, maybe we should consider hiring a few extra.
Let's just go as vigilantes. So, oh, Judy?
Yeah, I was thinking that if the previous limit was 25 and the six-foot distance was still required, it seems to me that I would agree that that would be workable. I mean, why change course in the middle of the stream? And I'd like to know, yeah, I'm going to agree with Deanna, like, what's broken?
The recitals in the order say, in all phases, voluntary social distancing's actions are not being followed in many areas, including the central Oregon coast, which exacerbates the risk to the community. So I think what Deanna said is they're not observing the restrictions now.
So the problem with that, as also stated, is an enforcement issue. And I think the public, from my experience, misinterprets a lot of this stuff. And I'm not sure myself, but more than 25 people out my window on the beach, you know, seems to get some people excited. And it's seven and a half miles of beach. Now granted, there's social distancing going on in, that I've seen. But, you know, walking around the outlet mall or, you know, in a large store, I've been told that some businesses, you, patrons have questioned, you know, whether there are too many people in the store. Safeway, for example. Does that mean, you know, Safeway is limited to 75 or 25 people in that store? So I, you know, I think we have enough difficulty trying to explain, not only to our own citizens, but those who venture in from outside. And then compounded by, you know, again, my concern, none of this is, appears to be overly enforceable anyway. And, you know, I think it just really confuses the whole bloody issue. So, one, unless you, I guess we could take kind of a position, unless we heard some, we hear something on the meeting in the afternoon, or 1:30 with, that would change our mind. You know, Deanna's point is there's been some specific connected outbreaks. And answering the question of how better enforcement than, you know, exists in the face covering enforcement? Deanna, you've got question?
Yeah, I was just going to ask the chief if there's a difference for him, for enforcement, from 10 to 25 people. I know he'd be having to count more than 10 people, which would lengthen the time to consider. But, but I'm just kind of curious because, you know, I can see us going, anyway, never mind my personal comment, how about just my question to the chief?
Well, to this point, you know, all of the contacts with, we made with very few exceptions, we'll get somebody that grumbles a little bit, but we haven't had anybody just out and out go off the rocker about us showing up and whether it's on a noise complaint and we find that they're in violation of the V R D rental, a couple of that we've had on a 24-hour notice. You know, thankfully, we haven't been called in to negotiate a truce in Safeway of somebody going the wrong way up the aisle or not wearing their mask. But by and large, and especially with our business partners, I think it has gone well. I think it's been well received. We see that they're posting, the hotels and V R Ds that we've checked are keeping their logs, has been requested. And so I think the approach we've taken to this point is successful. If we start going out and confronting 10, 20, 30 people that's on the beach for a bonfire and we got a little alcohol involved and we go down there and say, okay, you got to get out of here if you're not wearing your mask, then that might escalate things to a little different, different taste. But to this point, we've been very successful, I think. Now, successful meaning we haven't had any big fights with anybody. And I think by and large, most people are voluntarily complying when you ask them as to how successful our campaign is getting the rank and file of everybody out there. You've got some that are wearing, some that are aren't, some that are adamant about wearing, and some that don't care, just leave me alone.
Judy?
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if Lincoln County got kind of thrown in there as far as this requirement, because it came maybe specifically from eastern Oregon. And I know that the entire Lincoln County got put in this group, at least that's what the governor said, was because the commissioners were receptive to the change. So I just can't help but think maybe we got thrown in there and then as a group, we could discuss, well, are we going to do this or not? But maybe they just threw us in there to cover their bases. That's my thought.
What? The 25 down to 10 wasn't, isn't in the governor's?
Oh, it's not? It just came?
No, no, it's just the face cover.
Okay.
This is from the county commissioners that are evidently, they must have had enough public comment that they want.
I'm still sticking to my 25. Okay.
So I guess what I'm really hearing is, you know, staying the course, stay in phase one as it relates to the group, unless, you know, and I don't know what you're going to hear in the discussion. So is that, is that the sense that, you know, everybody's, you know, on city council is looking at that? Okay. And I don't know, you know, we'll present that in any kind of discussion. So, chief, did you want to, you have something?
No, I think it's, it's a great discussion and one worthy of having. And like I said before, I don't want to be in your shoes because you're going to get blasted whichever way you drop on this. But I just think the state and county and our municipalities really need to take a look at which way you're trying to push law enforcement on doing on this and what that truly, what that expectation truly is and means.
Thank you. Judy, you still have your hand up? Did you want, okay. I guess, do we want to, or need to take a formal vote on staying the course of phase one as far as it relates to group? Or I hear, I see unanimous consensus, unless someone doesn't?
Let's take a vote.
All right. How about a motion?
I move to retain the 25 people distance in groups.
From staying the course with phase one as it relates to groups?
Yep, that's what I meant.
Okay.
I'll second that.
And who's that? Deanna? Oh, Diane, okay. All right. We have a motion with a second discussion. Deanna?
I'm going to say no because I haven't heard the reason that the commissioners wished us to discuss it. So I'm not ready to vote.
Okay.
I'm also not ready.
You do get to vote, you know, because it's on the table. Nice try. All right, we have a, Rick, you've got your hand up?
Just a little thought that I, I worry about trying to impose, it's essentially unenforceable laws. Because I think it engenders disrespect for law in general. So I, I think we just need to be really cautious about that. And I appreciate, I really appreciate, chief, the effort that you and the police force are putting forth on this. So it's, I think we need to really hold their, their concerns in high regard here.
Thank you. Mr. Appicello, you raised your hand?
Yeah, but it's not about this motion. So I feel, I have something else.
All right. Diane?
In regards to changing the rules from outside of the other counties, we have to remember that we have people coming in from everywhere who have different phases, different understandings. And so if we say we're in phase one, they may understand that. But then they come here and go, oh, but now we're phase one, but we're not phase one. And it's not enforceable. So I just say, yeah, we need to stay the course because it's very confusing and we don't follow it and either do our tourists.
And Deanna, you must have another comment? Oh, okay. All right. So we have a motion with a second on the table, and that would be to stay the course in, for phase one, as it relates to the group number. Roll call, please.
Yes.
Hinton?
No, I want to wait to hear the county's reasoning.
Hoglund?
No.
Kuz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Okay, Mr. Appicello?
I just wanted to let you know, I've been sending emails to Wayne and he responded, this is about enforcement. As we predicted, it's not their intent to enforce the local public health directive, even though they have the authority to do that. And obviously, it's because we now have the O H A guidance. He said they were getting some information from the governor's office about local enforcement and that the county health department will enforce with this education-first philosophy, the establishments that they regulate and license. And then they'll look to O H A and maybe local public health for assistance in the other non-regulated areas. O H A might enforce, and then he puts in parentheses, ha, and the last resort is law enforcement. He does say is intending to call a meeting of the city attorneys next week to discuss enforcement issues. And so we get some better information and guidance on the enforcement. So just letting you know.
All right. Thank you. Rick, you have comment?
One last thought. I wonder if we could get maybe a little stronger language on our electronic side? And can we put one on the south side of town also?
Regarding the?
The masks. Masks are mandatory in this community.
If we get that many.
Face coverings, though. Face coverings, not masks.
Yep. All right.
Has the call-in information been sent out for this 1:30 meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you need me to send that to you?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
All right. Well, with that, oh, Deanna?
I just wanted to ask Ron if he would send that out to all of us. I have so many emails that it got buried, so I don't know the number.
Okay.
Thank you.
With that, why don't we adjourn this meeting and see the next one at 1:30?
Thank you.
Riley, did you need something or was that just a, okay. All right. See you later. All right, see you later.